You know, social media has probably got a definite part in the increase that we've seen.
So what kind of a paintball causes this type of damage? Police say both the paintballs and the guns can be modified, but they've asked us not to share the information on how they do it for fear of encouraging more attacks.
As far as the crimes go, they've been using robberies, they've been using aggravated assaults, they've been using vandalism. There's an array of crimes that these individuals have used paintball guns.
Police warn perpetrators that a moment of so-called "paintball fun" could lead to a felony. Aaron's four alleged attackers have been arrested on charges of assault with a deadly weapon. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Witnesses of these or other crimes can make a report anonymously by calling Crime Stoppers at 800-222-8477. Imagine a cyber neighborhood watch where local businesses can warn each other about ransomware they've experienced while using city resources to prevent attacks. No need to imagine, this technology is already here. Gil Reyes has more from the city's Emergency Operations Center. Gil?
Yana, you may be surprised at the number of times the city of LA's vast computer network comes under attack by hackers. An estimated 4 million times per day. Well, now the city has launched an initiative to share some of that information with the public, and the hope is businesses as well as individuals share their experiences too. Lawrence Yu is owner of Zenku Sushi and Grill in Little Tokyo. His small business has not been hacked yet, but if it were to happen, even for one day, he says results could be devastating.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, if we get hacked in our computer system, then we have to shut down our business.
An estimated $2,000 wasted per day if hackers disabled the restaurant's payment process and deliveries via DoorDash. But aiming to thwart such a cyber attack is the new LA Cyber Lab, billed as America's first city-led partnership to protect businesses and residents from malware and ransomware.
We believe that the city of Los Angeles should lend a hand to business, that we should help connect them with each other and share information with them. The businesses, big and small, deserve secure networks that allow them to make the next payroll for residents here in Los Angeles, the next delivery for people who live here in LA.
Helping out too is the city's Information Technology Agency. It stops millions of cyber attacks against the city every day, attacks coming from all over the world.
We're a very attractive target. We run the LA Police Department, we run LAX, we run the largest port in the western hemisphere, so we receive a lot of attacks. So we get a lot of threats that we block very successfully. So let's pivot and make the shift so we're not just defending the city of Los Angeles' government, but we're helping LA businesses and residents protect themselves.
Big companies like AEG, Microsoft, and Riot Games have now signed on to LA Cyber Lab.
We're able to work with and collaborate with all of our partners to make sure we bring this not to just the big businesses that were mentioned, but more importantly, the small ma and pa businesses, the ones that are operating home-based businesses, the brick and mortar companies that can't afford to find out what information they're vulnerable for.
To receive free, updated cyber alerts, log onto la cyber lab dot org. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Again, this service is free and is expected to work best with more local businesses and individuals participating. While living in LA, we know that summer means brush fires, and LA firefighters are gearing up with two additions to their firefighting air fleet. Anna Marcos has more on what it means for all of us.
Brush fire season has arrived in LA as the Santa Ana winds blow head-on into LA's dustyous conditions. But firefighters are ready as they debut their newest water-dropping helicopter, the Fire Four. That means LA now has four firefighting choppers and two command-and-control helicopters.
It's multi-mission. It can do brush fires, it can do cliff rescue, air ambulance, police operations. That's part of the reason that we bought this type of aircraft.
LA firefighters are also welcoming the yearly return of the Ericsson Sky Crane helitanker, which can drop a whopping 2,600 gallons of water in one single drop. The Sky Crane is contracted to the city for the most dangerous part of the fire season. Another plus, LA Fire choppers can be almost anywhere in the city in under 15 minutes.
It takes our crews anywhere from 10 to 12 minutes to mobilize the fleet. That means pulling the aircraft out of the hangar, starting the aircraft, getting the crews loaded with the equipment, and getting airborne.
But there is one thing that can ground the choppers quick.
Operators of drones must not, I repeat, must not fly their unmanned aircraft anywhere near a brush fire. A drone that collides with a helicopter rotor blade can bring down a helicopter.
As long as drones don't get caught in the rotor blades, LA is more fire-ready than ever, equipped to take on whatever the fire season brings. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The LA Fire Department often partners with LA County Fire, which can bring the total number of choppers to more than 10, including two big helitankers. But can city agencies go totally gas-free? Well, LA Metro plans to do it for its vehicle fleet by the year 2030. And now, the Port of LA and Long Beach are setting their own zero emission targets. Gil Reyes has the details.
The mayors of LA and Long Beach have an ambitious goal: zero emissions at their shared port complex within 20 years.
Because this is really brave new territory. We're talking inside privately. We'll set these goals, and there will be setbacks. They might be scientific setbacks, they might be that the technology's not there, but if we don't keep pushing and if we don't have those goals, we'll never get there.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti and Long Beach Mayor Robert Garcia are shooting for zero carbon emissions for all cargo handling equipment by the year 2030. This equipment includes port cranes. They're also shooting for gas-free zero emissions for all port trucks by the year 2035.
Also in direct statement that we will not go backwards in this country and in the region, but that we will push back every single step of the way to ensure that we meet the goals of the Paris Agreement and that Los Angeles and Long Beach continue to lead.
Though the ports of LA and Long Beach have greatly reduced emissions under the 2006 Clean Air Action Plan, their port complex remains the biggest single diesel polluter in southern California.
And if any port in the world receives zero emissions, it must be our port complex, and we must do it first. If we don't, who will?
At the ports of LA and Long Beach, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
An updated Clean Air Action Plan is expected in November. It's expected to include new investments in green technology, also plans to set up agreements with other west coast ports to drastically reduce pollution. As port officials work to keep our air clean, other city departments are doing their part to keep our streets clean. In fact, they're doing such a great job, they got an award for their efforts. Anna Marcos explains.
No street or alley is too dirty or garbage-filled for these guys. The Bureau of Sanitation workers are part of the Clean Stat LA Initiative, which in turn is part of the mayor's larger Clean Streets Initiative, a plan to sanitize and spiff up all of LA's streets.
The mayor really wanted to find a way to ensure that every neighborhood has a basic level of cleanliness.
All this housecleaning just clinched this group a National City Livability Award at the 2017 U.S. Conference of Mayors.
To see where our city workers hit the streets, in and out, there's some of the most dangerous, hazardous, and serious work of our city.
Under the Clean Stat program, sanitation workers drive through all the city's 6,500 miles of streets and 800 miles of alleys every few months. Each block gets a cleanliness score from 1 to 3. The Clean Stat program helps city workers know where to send the cleanup crews.
Achieving out-of-the-box, achieving creative, achieving forward-thinking endeavors requires great leadership.
It was something that even in a film task force meeting, the film industry thanked us for, because they're on location around our city.
So it appears many of LA's streets are camera-ready and ought to be in the movies. Still, city workers say plenty of streets lag behind with a grade of 1. They plan to keep working until all LA streets make Tinseltown proud. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Sanitation workers say the City Livability Award they won makes LA's Clean Streets program a model for cities around the country. It's a biennial athletic event bringing together police and fire agencies from around the world, all in one competitive space. Rasha Goel has more.
The opening ceremony and parade of athletes for the World Police and Fire Games kicked off recently at the Los Angeles Coliseum, with 8,600 athletes from more than 70 countries. LAPD Chief Charlie Beck offered some friendly advice to the competitors.
Remember, if you're competing against a Los Angeles police officer, we'll love you when it's over, but not until then.
The athletes are active and retired law enforcement officers and firefighters, and will compete in 65 Olympic-style events over a 10-day period.
I hope to come away with medals. I'm pretty good at what I do. If I can beat some Americans along the way, even better.
I came here for one reason, and it's to, like, put an example for the other peoples, to be friendly and good players.
Athletes will compete in a variety of sports and track and field events. They will also box, swim, shoot trap, and ride off-road motorcycles.
You have a universal human impulse that is the very best in us, to wake up, to put on your uniforms, and to protect human life.
We welcome you to Los Angeles, to the World Police and Fire Games, to experience the best that our city and our region have to offer.
And regardless of who takes home a medal at this competition, all of these competitors have already won with their commitment to the call of duty. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
But before you can compete, you have to join the force, and that's exactly what 44 individuals just did, becoming the latest group to join the ranks of the LAPD. Anna Marcos takes us to the latest graduation at a time when police conduct has again taken center stage across the nation.
Hats up in the air for graduating rookie Class 217, now turned into full-fledged LAPD officers.
It takes a certain person to become a police officer, and it's...
What kind of person?
It's just the person who's gonna go into the fight instead of run away from. Someone who's brave. I thought about that, and I knew that I had that in me.
And it's a tough moment for police. People are killing police officers for who they are, and others are telling them, "Oh, don't worry about the rules," and, you know, you can rough up suspects, people like our president. And I think it's so important for us to give a vision of what makes LA police so strong, that we play by the rules, but that we also protect the people.
City leaders and the police chief make it clear what times these rookies are policing in and what path they should take.
And you will never, ever do something as cowardly as to abuse a prisoner in custody. That is the ultimate betrayal of that badge that you wear.
The new recruits are diverse. They are women, military vets, and members of every ethnic group, including several immigrant recruits from various countries.
It was almost 20% female, and, you know, we had, I'd like to have more African-American representation.
Brittany Royer, one of eight women, was also chosen as class leader.
I believe they thought that I could lead the class with discipline, command presence.
John Gill, whose own dad is an LAPD officer, was given the number-one overall award in the class because, well, he's just good at everything.
Once I knew he was going to the police academy, I knew he was just going to, like, get a big award, like this big or something.
And he did?
Yeah, and so I'm really proud of him.
It's a little nerve-wracking, because I know what it's like out there on the streets, and he's gonna be boots-running and hitting the ground pretty soon, the next couple of days, so a little proud and nervous at the same time.
Still, the family has high hopes for this rookie.
Tell me what you think he'll be.
I feel like he's gonna be a chief.
Okay, rookie John Gill, just a few more promotions to go, but for him and all 44 of these young cops, just wearing the badge is promotion enough. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Neglected, dilapidated, those are just some of the words to describe the old Jordan Downs Public Housing Complex in Watts. But that's changing, as Gil Reyes reports, Phase 1 of a startling spruce-up has already started.
Jordan Downs Housing Complex in Watts begins its billion-dollar transformation, the goal: to turn it into a national model for mixed-use public housing.
We've got a housing crisis, and we need to build more units, and that starts right here, right now, today.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and friends break ground on Phase 1 of construction, opening next year 115 new affordable housing units. Future phases of construction will add even more housing at Jordan Downs, nine sprawling acres of open space, a schnazi state-of-the-art community center, restaurants, a grocery store, and...
The renewed Watts will have also more jobs, as the mayor indicated. 30% of the workforce that will build this development will come from here, Watts.
But there is controversy at Jordan Downs: lead, arsenic, and other toxins found in the soil of the construction area a few years ago. Though much of it has been removed, activists want more soil testing and cleanup before work begins. State regulators and the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles say the area is safe. That's good enough for the mayor.
We're a part of breathing hope back into one of the greatest communities in the heart of this great city. Thank you, Watts, and God bless each and every one of you.
In Watts, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Developers say current residents of Jordan Downs won't be displaced during construction, and they'll be moving into the new addition once the first 115 units are finished next year. Turning now to making a main thoroughfare in the valley a more walkable, bikeable college-town destination. The neighborhood of Reseda recently got a big cultural boost during seven summer days. Gil Reyes has more.
This normally quiet stretch of Reseda Boulevard is bustling with bands and business.
It's really great. It's a great place for the community to get together and enjoy all the artwork and the talent that we have here. There's live music, there's different, you know, booths and businesses that you wouldn't normally, you know, just hop into.
We're at the Second Annual Reseda Boulevard Summer Series. For years, Reseda Boulevard has been a strip people usually just drove through, but that may be changing with new sidewalk improvements and seven recent Saturdays of walkable, bikeable, multicultural experiences.
We have food trucks, three live music stages, we have an art walk, art installation, vendors, businesses, a little bit of everything.
CJ Barina is owner of Collective Lifestyle, a Reseda Boulevard store specializing in streetwear. They also host live music, political, and spoken-word events. So a festival of free expression with neighboring businesses participating is right up their alley. A grant from the Department of Cultural Affairs helped make it happen.
I think it's good to have a street festival in Northridge, because they have a lot of events like this in Hollywood, and you have to go down to Hollywood, but I only live a few blocks away from this.
The festival takes place near Cal State University Northridge, home to the Valley Performing Arts Center and eclectic KCSN College Radio. An arts and music festival within a mile of campus seems like a good fit for many people.
Oh yeah, definitely. I think it's a really, like, community event. Like, a lot of people here are just from the valley. I'm just from the valley too, so it's definitely a good, good place to network, to showcase and to sell.
The more that you can support local, small businesses in and around the Los Angeles area and in the valley here, like, it just, it makes more sense. It helps the economy, it makes it a better community to live in.
At the Reseda Boulevard Summer Series, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Reseda Boulevard near Seesun has also recently added new sidewalks, bright yellow benches, and bike-protective lanes, improvements to make visiting more pleasant for cyclists and students. While a new program may potentially make it easier to park on street sweeping days, an up-and-coming media company invests in LA by making downtown its new home, and the very first diagonal crosswalk in Van Nuys gets the green light. All these stories in City B. The LA City Council approved a pilot program aimed at reducing the number of parking citations issued for street sweeping. Residents would be informed via a text or online tool when street sweepers have finished cleaning a street, making it safe to park there. The program would be implemented in Woodland Hills and West Los Angeles before potentially expanding to the entire city if successful. A report on the pilot program said it would be expected to take about 8 to 10 months to implement at a cost of $570,000. If the program were to go citywide, initial estimates show that LA could lose between $4.5 million and $11.8 million in parking citation revenue. The pilot program will now go to the full city council for a vote. Mayor Eric Garcetti helped welcome digital media company Me Too to its new headquarters in downtown LA. The company brings a Latino voice and perspective to mainstream entertainment across multiple platforms. It also works with the mayor's Higher LA Youth Initiative to recruit more young people in LA. The mayor said that everyone has a story that needs to be shared and heard.
And if you can tell your stories and connect, which you do every single day, Me Too has the power to change the world.
City Councilwoman Nuri Martinez and the LA Department of Transportation recently celebrated the completion of the San Fernando Valley's first all-way stop-controlled diagonal crosswalk at the intersection of Sylvan Street and Silmar Avenue at City Hall in Van Nuys. The location was chosen because of the high number of pedestrians that use the intersection. Officials say that the city's other diagonal scramble crosswalks have shown dramatic benefits to pedestrian safety. Officials say this new diagonal crosswalk is expected to have the same safety benefits to pedestrians.
The improvements like this will continue to revitalize the community of Van Nuys and making sure that people who live and work in this community get to work and home safely every day.
Lobster lovers converged on this yearly neighborhood party, where mouth-watering seafood was the star of the show. Anna Marcos has the delicious details from the 11th Annual San Pedro Lobster Festival.
Hats off to the lobster, or should we say hats on? Lots of lobster lovers were sporting the little lobster beanies as San Pedro's annual lobster festival kicked off near the USS Iowa in honor of the start of the lobster season.
I love festivals. I'm a huge festival person.
Los Angeles is such an iconic city. To have the community all come together around such a historic piece as the Iowa is just
All this lobster mania helps drum up an appetite, and of course, what's a lobster festival without some of the red-clawed creatures? We found lots of those going on plates, carried on plates, and most of all, eaten off plates.
I definitely think the food, the food's the best part.
And then a little music as all those red claws get digested, an epic block party that went on for days. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Get up close and personal with some Navy ships as they flex their mighty muscle during Fleet Week, enjoy a classic Mob Flake under the Stars, and immerse yourself in some powerful stage readings and other performances at Lamart Park. All this and this week's things to do. Navy warships from the US and Canada and their crews will sail into the Port of Los Angeles to kick off Los Angeles Fleet Week. During Labor Day weekend, the port will be filled with activities aboard the historic battleship Iowa, with concerts under the guns, a series of free music and comedy shows, entertainment, and lots of food. The festivities go on all weekend long, starting on Tuesday, August 29th until September 4th. For more, visit lafleetweek.com. If you happen to be on the other side of town, bring a picnic blanket and head over to the Autry's South Lawn to watch Goodfellas projected onto the largest outdoor movie screen on the west coast. Some of the city's tastiest food trucks and local bands will be on hand. It all takes place on Saturday, September 2nd. The Autry and Griffith Park is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. For more, visit eatseehere.com. The Lamart Park Vision Theater Consortium and the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs announced the Fourth Annual Vision Theater Festival of Staged Readings, which feature a wide range of performance events, including staged readings, receptions, panel discussions, artist talkbacks, and educational events. All productions feature the finest talent onstage and behind the scenes that LA has to offer. The festival is devoted to supporting culture and art-making in Lamart Park and South LA with an eye towards the African-American experience and legacy. The festival runs until Sunday, September 3rd. For more, call 323-290-2386. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at la city view dot org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Okay, good morning. If I could have everyone please take their seats. Everybody would please take their seats. Today is August 30. I want to welcome each and every one of you to Los Angeles City Hall, to the Los Angeles City Council meeting. This meeting, I mean, this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. You're all welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bouskayeno, Sadey, and Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kocorian, Martinez, Oferell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, West, and 14 members, excuse me, 15 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves. Ms. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, items 1 through 12 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 13, and it's an item for which a public hearing has been held. Please be advised that the Arts, Parks, and River Committee submitted this matter without recommendation and that there is a Rules, Elections, Intergovernmental Relations, and Neighborhoods Committee report for council's consideration. A motion is required.
Okay, so let's hold that item. And let me see, I think we may have some. Okay, so if you could pull up Antonio Ramirez, we're going to go quickly into public comment. Antonio Ramirez, and then Mr. Walsh, you're on deck. Ms. Ramirez, your items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Thank you. Let's begin with number 1. No matter what you do to improve and maintain the Hill and Fifth Streets, you're not going to improve on anything because as long as you've got these racist, hate-mongering wetbacks and gangbangers.
No, you can stay on the, stay on the item.
We're talking about improvements.
No, 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 stay on the item, Ms. Ramirez. Last, Ms. Ramirez, last warning.
And again, we're talking about improvements and maintenance and street lightings. The street lightings don't last because the gangbangers break the lighting systems.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, please.
I'm here, I can read.
No, you, you. You are not staying on the topic.
You're cutting into my time, and you're not going to turn my time.
Sergeants, remove Ms. Ramirez. She's not cooperating. I've warned her three times. She's not on topic. Please remove her.
And for the record, Ms. Ramirez is.
She's continuing to disrupt this meeting.
That, she is. She's shouting as she leaves.
Okay, no, 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 let's don't be, no, 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 folks, not, we're not going to be like her. Shh, shh. We're not going to be like her. Mr. Walsh, come on. John Walsh, she's continuing to disrupt. Mr. Walsh, let me get Mr. Walsh on my screen.
And for the record, Ms. Ramirez is continuing to shout out in the back of the room, disrupting the meeting.
Mr. Walsh, you have items 1, 2. Please remove her, sergeants.
Man, she's really, I never saw her like this.
Mr. Walsh, you have items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and then you have general public comment. So let's give Mr. Walsh his time. Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood.
Hold on, Mr. Walsh. I don't want you to have to talk over that. Wait, 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 give him back his time. Give him back his time. Nope, Mr. Walsh, stay on subject. Go ahead.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems and, she sounds like an old white guy. Okay, I don't sound like an old white guy, like a middle-aged white guy. Number 1, okay, this is lighting? You do a good job with lighting. Once you got rid of those carbon arc lights, and I've been here since '66, we have had absolutely no problems. So you're doing a good job on the carbon arcs and all of these lighting districts. You're doing an excellent job. So the maintenance of all these lighting districts. Next, 68? Okay, so you're doing a good job. And I don't need every single second. You can take this 1 minute and 38 seconds, fold it, you know what you can do with it. I don't need it.
Give him his 1 minute for general public comment.
I need my, my 1 minute public comment. I'm telling you right now, you know, I got up here and said I was going to kick Devon Maharaj, the editor and publisher's ass, out of town. Well, I did do it, didn't I? He's not here anymore. And I'd like to say to everyone here, hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? I'm really glad we have some nice music. We have, and although, watch these people up here, they're not going to pay attention to you. They're not going to pay attention to the music and everything. They're just going to pay attention to them, to themselves. We're talking here about HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to our website and you'll find out what's really happening in this city. And it's not very nice. And little old ladies can, doesn't mean anything. It's called jerking off.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. I have Leah Memsic or something like that. Items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and general public comment. Please come forward. Mr. Clerk and Mr. City Attorney, this is the last multiple comment. We're closing it. Let me check. Okay, I think I found it. So, Mr. Gus, you want to come up? Oh, wait, 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 no. Bear with me, let me get this squared away. Okay, so Leah, Leah's not here. Okay, so Mr. Gus, I have general, I have a general public comment card on you. You want to speak on another item, that item is not up, so we'll give you your general public comment now.
Okay, 13 is available, though.
Yes, for later.
Okay, so I'm multiple. All right, well, I'm going to use my 1 minute. I write for City Watch, I'm going to add to what I'm going to say later about item 13. Council members, you're condemning Christopher Columbus as you should. However, many of you have accepted thousands of dollars from a Democrat operative named Ed Buck, who refers to African-American men as six-foot N-words. Let's talk about your hypocrisy. Bob Blumenfield took $2,100. He's condemning Columbus as he should, but he took $2,100 from a man who refers to black men as six-foot N-words. Mr. Sadeo took $1,400 from him. Mr. Fewer took $8,000 from him. Mr. Galprin took $3,600 from him. Mr. Garcetti, $1,400. Mr. Corretts, $2,200. Mr. Kocorian, $2,200. If you condemn Christopher Columbus as you should, condemn your Democratic operative who calls black men six-foot N-words.
Thank you, thank you. Let's open the roll on items 1 through 12. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bouskayeno for a presentation. Mr. Bouskayeno, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, the Vice Admiral just arrived, and, okay, we're walking.
You ready?
Let's give a round of applause and welcome the United States Navy to the John Ferraro Chambers, celebrating Fleet Week in the city of Los Angeles. Join me up here, please. Thank you for your service to our great country. Rear Admiral Nora Tyson is here. Great to see you, ma'am. We are so excited to welcome the Second Annual Fleet Week, the United States' third fleet to Los Angeles. Love you. Welcome back. So standing with me, colleagues and guests here at the John Ferraro Chambers, is Vice Admiral Nora Tyson, the commanding officers and executive officers of the USS Pasadena and the USS Anchorage, as well as the Commander-Master Chief of the USS Anchorage and Chief of the Boat of the USS Pasadena, and our United States Coast Guard personnel. Again, let's give them a warm welcome to the chambers. Thank you very much for joining us. Throughout our country, the United States Navy has over 300,000 active-duty personnel and more than 100,000 ready reserve. And a fun fact of that, that the number of both offers, offers and accepted offers of a four-year full-tuition scholarships to high school students from LA to the United States Naval Academy has steadily increased over the past three years since scheduling the US Navy ship visits to Los Angeles has continued to been increasing over the course of the last few years. There was a jump from 11 offers to eight accepted from the class of 2014 to 17 offers and 15 accepted, the class of 2017, the first senior class that has benefited from the first LA Fleet Week here in Los Angeles. The Second Annual LA Fleet Week gives every Angelino the opportunity to thank our sailors, Marines, and Coast Guardsmen for the work they do. and Coast Guardsmen for the work they do 24/7, uh, year-round. Just last night, I was at Pappy's Restaurant, LA, downtown San Pedro's newest restaurant. I had the opportunity to treat a few of our servicemembers to dinner and say thank you. And this weekend, thousands of people along the LA waterfront will have that chance to do the same. Um, this is but a small token of our appreciation for the work the Navy, Coast Guard, and Marines do around the globe, defending us and providing humanitarian and disaster relief, uh, to the world. In fact, Vice Admiral Tyson is overseeing the fleet near the Korean Peninsula right now, protecting not only US but also our, our allies. So let's give her and her men and women a round of applause for doing that. So I encourage my colleagues and, uh, residents of the city of Los Angeles and those visiting from around the region to, um, come down to the LA waterfront for a weekend full of activities. And then even if you can't make it to the waterfront, it's more likely, uh, that some of our sailors will be visiting your neighborhoods this weekend. Um, they may, they'll, they'll be attending a Dodger game, uh, this Monday on Labor Day in Councilmember Sadio's district, volunteering at a LA food bank in Councilmember Price's district, discussing veteran housing and hiring-- veteran hiring, rather, in Councilmember Weezer's district, or learning about motion capture in Councilmember Bonn's district. And LA Fleet Week will impact every corner of our great city. And if you can make it down to the waterfront, come tour one of the five ships and one submarine docked at the port. The US, um, or, uh, the Navy ships that will be, uh, at the LA waterfront. USS Anchorage, USS Dewey, USS Scout, the USS Pasadena and the US Coast Guard Cutter active. And in addition, this year, the Royal Canadian Navy HMCS Ottawa. You can also join us tonight in the downtown San Pedro area. We'll, we'll lay out, roll out the blue carpet for our servicemen and women in downtown San Pedro for a huge welcome party from 5:00 to 10:00 PM on Sixth and Seventh Streets. Or for our '80s folks who, I'll take you back to the '80s colleagues, Quiet Riot, um, and Los Lobos on Friday night, uh, with Vince Neil and Motley Crue on Saturday night. So those are just a few of the great things happening. Um, and LA Fleet Week, which continues through Labor Day. And before I, uh, I bring up Vice Admiral Nora Tyson, who is a rock star vice, um, a vice admiral. And I've had a chance to know her for the last couple of years. We love you. She's got great energy, a commitment to our country and her men and women. I do wanna recognize and first call the, the USO to do a, a special presentation, Mr. President, if I may. Let's give them a round, round of applause. Thank you. One more. Floor is yours. Yeah. USO, thank you very much. Now, colleagues, help me welcome the Vice Admiral Nora Tyson, Commander of the US Third Fleet. On her last on-duty Fleet Week, welcome to the city of Los Angeles once again, Vice Admiral Nora Tyson.
Well, I just wanna say thank you again to the community. This is my second Fleet Week, third time to be here. Los Angeles Navy Days, the first year, and now the second Los Angeles Fleet Week. I just wanna say thank you to the community for the hospitality, for the support that you give our sailors, our Coast Guardsmen, our Marines during this week, but not just this week, but every day, the support that you give to us, to our families, supporting those young people who are around the world, supporting and defending our country. So again, thank you. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you, Vice Admiral Nora Tyson. Now I'd like to bring up, um, representing the Board of Harbor Commissioners, Commissioner David Arian, uh, for a presentation of the First Arrival Plaque on behalf of the Port of Los Angeles. Commissioner Arian.
Uh, thank you, Joe, and, uh, whenever a ship comes into the Port of LA, we welcome them with a plaque. Uh, the Port of LA is where international capital meets international labor. It's a strong working-class community. But over the past couple of years, we begin to see a transformation, uh, transition taking place, not only in terms of the flow of cargo, but as a destination. And this week represents really that step forward. And this year is bigger than last year, and next year will be bigger than this year. So at this time, we'd like to enter, we'd like to welcome, I guess, the, the captain, I would assume, of the, uh, USS Pasadena.
Hope you didn't demote him, baby.
What are, what are you? Tell me, tell me.
I'm a commander.
Come on, tell, tell me what you are. Tell me what you are.
On behalf of the officers and crew of Pasadena, I'd just like to say it's a great honor to be here and thank you very much.
All right. Yeah. Okay, Betsy.
Okay. And, uh, from the USS Anchorage?
Right, introduce yourself, sir.
Yeah, introduce yourself, I know. There's no name on this. It's not my fault.
Captain Dennis Jacko, on behalf of the officers and crew of USS Anchorage, uh, we are thrilled to be here and look forward to opening our ship, uh, to, uh, the public for tourists through across this weekend.
All right. And lastly-- One more, David.
Whoops, whoops, sorry.
There you go. Hey, I mean, this goes to USS Scout.
Okay, and the last one is to the USS Scout.
Not here. Not here.
Okay.
But hey-- Even more important--
Just like the Oscars, uh, accepting on behalf--
Yeah, more important.
That's right.
Yeah, get in there, Joe.
All right.
Thank you. You got it, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner. And lastly, on behalf of the entire city family, Council President Wesson, our mayor, um, we welcome, again, our second annual Los Angeles Fleet Week in all, in honoring and recognizing the servicemen and women who protect our shores, near and abroad. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We love you. All right. Betsy, I'll come in. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go in the back. Thank you, Mr. Price. You wanna recognize, actually, uh, Sam Pedra and Mike Camereri, former naval officer immigrated to this great country from Italy. Mike Camereri just celebrated his birthday yesterday. So we recognize you and thank you for your service to our country as well. This is why, uh, the importance of Fleet Week. We recognize those who also, um, made the sacrifices of this great country by serving in our Navy, Coast Guard, and Marines. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues.
Let's give them one more loud round of applause. Thank you for your service. Mr. Kukorian, uh, are you ready for your presentation? The floor is now Mr. Kukorian's.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Um, members, today is a, a day when, in many ways, we're going to be celebrating the rich diversity of cultures that make up, uh, our great city. And one sterling example of that, I think, is the Wat Thai Temple in Council District Two in North Hollywood. The Wat Thai Temple was the first Thai Buddhist temple in North America and continues to be the largest, uh, Thai Buddhist congregation, uh, in America. And we're very proud, uh, to call the Wat Thai Temple, uh, to have the Wat Thai Temple home in, in our, uh, district. It's really an iconic landmark. If you haven't visited it, you should. It's a place of great peace and tranquility and beauty. Uh, and, um, and the, uh, monks, uh, and others at the temple will certainly greet you with, with open arms. And, um, I'm so proud to be able to represent them in the council. But the Thai, the Wat Thai Temple is not only a gathering place, um, for, uh, um, the congregants, it is also a place that ensures the preservation of the Thai culture, traditions, and languages for Thai-Americans throughout our, our city. And every year, a group of highly qualified graduates of Chulalongkorn University in Thailand spend a year at the Wat Thai Temple, living and teaching in Los Angeles. Uh, these young men and women teach the Thai language, the traditional Thai music and dance to children at the Wat Thai Temple. And during their summer residency program, um, the recent graduates from the university also get a taste of, uh, a new culture and the diversity of Los Angeles as well, which they take, uh, back with them to, to Thailand. They have an opportunity not only to teach and to preserve, um, this long and, uh, rich and ancient, uh, culture, but they have an opportunity to improve their own English skills and gain a better understanding of the United States as well. So it's a great pleasure for me to, uh, recognize, um, the, uh, summer program participants, uh, who have been here for the summer and will be heading back to Bangkok, uh, and to thank them for their service here to, uh, the young people of the Thai-American community and to the Wat Thai Temple. And, um, in helping me to do that, I'd like to introduce the Deputy Director of the Wat Thai Temple, uh, Sumana Berua.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, and the, our, uh, council member, Mr. Paul Kukorian, for your support and for your courage and your cooperations that every activity as well you have done at the Wat Thai Temple for benefit for our community. And also, Mr. Kukorian's, Mr. Paul, always give good signal and good, uh, respond to our, uh, any kind of whatever we need, he come to help us. So thank you very much for your help and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to introduce the honorees?
We have a twelve, uh, uh, summer school teachers came from Thailand. Kanjana Baathong. Ratima Menmani. Uh, Thangkamon Kawachat. Natagorn Khonsi. Rata Phom Chatviroth. Tensiri Noyswat. Ponchai Romwapi. Vanarang Urayri Gaphon. Vichai Nantakon. Sangduren Komma. Thira La Ton. Vayayut Thanabudd. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. President, we'll be giving certificates to, um, these young, uh, teachers in the back, uh, but I hope that you'll, uh, join me in thanking them, uh, for their service to the people, to the Thai-American community here in Los Angeles, and give them a warm Los Angeles welcome.
Please give them another round of applause. And we do thank you so very much for all that you do. We're moments away before dealing with our final, uh, item for today, so wanna make sure that Mr., uh, Buscayino and other members are present. Gonna be moving people up, I think, adding additional people to the chamber. So why don't we, we'll just, uh, wait until we, uh, get more folk in here. Can we have the staff come forward on, uh, item 13? So we should have-- CLA? CAO? Okay, if everyone would please take their seats. If everyone would please take their seats. Now, before this, now before this council is item thirteen, I want Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Buscaino, even though we have heard a lot of public comment on this issue, I think that it's appropriate that we reopen the public comment period. And so what we're going to do, what we're going to do is we're going to start off with, let's, fifteen minutes on each side. Okay, just relax. We're going to start off, like I said, we're going to do fifteen, or we're going to attempt to do fifteen and fifteen. We want to start off with Dominic DeLuca, if you'd please come forward. Ann Potenza. Yes, sir. Identify yourself and go ahead.
My name is Dominic DeLuca. Thank you for the chance to speak here. I am for the pro Columbus Day, keeping it Columbus Day. For the reason being, you know, Los Angeles, we set the standard for a lot of this nation. We've got entertainment, we've got fashion, we've got cuisine. This is our opportunity to show unity, to not strip anybody's culture, anybody's heroes, to have inclusiveness. Rest of the country is dividing itself, splitting up towns, splitting up states along these same types of ideas. It's not helping anything out. This is Los Angeles's chance to lead the nation, to show the United States what we can do, that we actually can get along. We don't have to take away one or the other. We can be inclusive, we can come to a compromise, and that's what this is about. That's what this meeting's about, that's what the conversations that I heard outside were about, inclusiveness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ann Potenza. I'm the president of the Federated Italo-Americans, and, thank you. And I stand here, I've been, for two years, I've been coming here in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day. On behalf of the Italian community, we want to celebrate with you. We just don't want it to be at the expense of Columbus Day. There are controversies up and down about the pros and cons of Columbus, but there's one hard fact that we have to look at, and it's ugly, and I hate to bring it, but Columbus is on trial because of slavery and genocide that is associated with him and everything that has happened in the Americas since he came five hundred years ago. The reality is, is that if we look at that and we only base a holiday on what was happening five hundred years ago, even thousands, slavery existed eleven thousand years ago, even further. We don't condone it since we had a civil war, we put that to rest in our country. But the fact is, even the Native Americans, the indigenous people, ancient civilizations have engaged in slavery, and genocide is because of the disease that came.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thomas, Thomas Cacciatore. Okay, let me say this. I know that there are a lot of people that are here at this emotional issue, but let me be clear. First of all, to you, Mr. Herman, you're not going to disrupt this meeting. No, Mr. Herman, your last warning, okay? So, when other people speak, there no hissing, there's no booing. They have the right to their opinion. When you come up, I will make sure that you have silence as well. So if you disagree with the speaker, just let them speak, they'll get the same minute that you will get. So do I have, Thomas? Thomas, please, sir, come on forward. Please let him out.
My name is Tom Cacciatore, and I've been proud to represent Native Americans as a lawyer over the years, for forty-five years. But I take issue with this particular proposal by Councilman Farrell. I think that it's a cramped and limited view of history. I want to salute, by the way, the demonstration of the Native American people here today. It was terrific. But I ask that you not create a racial conflict which Mr. O'Farrell's proposal, I think, would create. We have no ethnic animosity toward the Native American people. But to call simply the fact that Columbus set foot, and other explorers too, set foot, and somehow that was genocide, is a distortion of the English language. The fact that Magellan and Hernando Cortez found unbelievable cruelty...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Individuals that were here today. David Rockello.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to ask Mitchell Farrell to please not make allies fight each other. We need to look deeper at this consideration. Please postpone the vote, and let's have some real dialogue and some justice and healing, much like what they did in Barnesdale Park a year ago over gentrification and racism. Thank you very much.
Is it Gabriel Jenkinson?
I just started speaking?
Go ahead, sir.
I was born and raised in Los Angeles, and in a small way, I'm representative of this beautiful city. Much like our town, I'm composed of a vast array of ethnicities and cultures. I'm Italian and Afro-Caribbean, with Carib Indian roots. I believe that the Italian community, and the migrant population in particular, have contributed greatly to the success of this country, and that these contributions deserve to be recognized. Columbus Day has come to represent just that, the tired and poor, the huddled masses yearning to breathe free, following the lamp to the golden door. Unfortunately, it also represents the perpetual oppression of the Native community on the other side of that door. For me, this creates a great dilemma, celebration of one culture at the expense of another. I, like the city of Los Angeles, shouldn't have to rip out my heart in order to keep hold of my soul. We should not be pitting one community against another. We should celebrate the unique amalgamation of cultures that makes our city, our country, special. We should celebrate the history of the Italian community and the heritage of the Native community, not exclusively, but separately. Columbus Day needs to be rebranded as a day to acknowledge the contributions of the Italian community as opposed to white colonialism. And we need another day to celebrate the past, present, and future of America's indigenous peoples.
Thank you, sir. If I could get Margarita, Margarita Underhill, Eleonora Granada?
Good morning. I'm here as representative of the comittees, the Italian Committee for Foreign Italian Living in Los Angeles and the United States. I am here to plead everyone to really don't create a division between our community, to maintain the day of the Italian heritage, maybe call it something else, but maintain the day, the respect, the contribution of the Italian community in this big country. And at the same time, I strongly believe the Native American, they should have a day, a bank holiday day, a payday, and every day should be Native American Day. And there's no doubt in our mind as Italian community. At the same time, I want to emphasize the fact that Columbus Day changed the name, call it Heritage Italian Day, Immigrant Day, but is a day to respect the Italian community, a day which has been cheered and wanted for generation and generation of hard work in Italian, respecting other community, working hard for all of us. Thank you.
Was Eleonora? Oh, that was Eleonora, so it was Margarita? Margarita, are you here? Please, come on up.
Buongiorno. Il mio nome è Margherita Palumbo Underhill, and I'm so happy to be here in front of all of you today. Thank you for reconsidering to keep Columbus Day as a national holiday and as a holiday here in L.A. City. It's amended today that you keep Columbus Day not only for the Italian people in your community, but also for all the people of Los Angeles, including yourself. Columbus Day represents certain virtues in our societies that are admired by all American people, including vision, discovery, determination.
No, come on, hold her time, hold her time. You're going to get your time, let her speak. Yes.
There are certain things in humanity that all of us aspire to, and that is that when people start from nothing, like Columbus, he was a cheese trader, and everybody was laughing at him, and he wanted to come to this country, and he wanted to do something good, not just for him, not just for the Italians, but for everybody.
Thank you.
And that's what we would like to keep, that kind of vision. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Massimino Mastoni, is there Massimino? Please come forward. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I am Italian a hundred percent, and I have to admit that Christopher Columbus was the first illegal immigrant here in the United States. That said, that said, I love the indigenous culture, I love the Native American cultures, I respect it with all my heart, but in the same time, I think it's absolutely unfair to get something out of our culture and to blame just one man of something that he didn't do. He was an explorer, like many other people, and history, unfortunately, it's like a big stream of blood, with people trying to overcome other people all the times, and blaming Christopher Columbus is absolutely unfair. We should celebrate the indigenous culture, and in the same time, to celebrate an Italian explorer who did something that is absolutely remarkable, otherwise, we're going to lose everything. Thanks very much.
Thank you. John Corda Giovanni, John Corda Giovanni, please come forward. Just come on and speak into the mic, come on.
Oh, I'm an Italian, but I'm actually an indigenous Italian, I'm Sardinian. That means one in many millions of Italians are Sardinian. I'm a hundred percent Sardinian, indigenous. Listen, the Italians did a lot for this country. We don't know much about what Christopher Columbus did to the people, I'm sure he wasn't a bad guy, but then politics stepped in. Wait a minute, shut your mouths.
No, 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 no. No, 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 wait, 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 wait.
Oh, we say step to feet.
No, 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 no. I respect what you say.
Thank you, sir.
But I'm the one that runs this meeting, like it or not.
I'm sorry.
Please let him speak. Now you go ahead.
Thank you. We did a lot for this country, and I think everybody knows that every time they eat spaghetti. Okay, so why don't you stop picking on Christopher Columbus as though you're picking on our people? We never hurt you, we never wanted to hurt you, we embraced you, we taught you a lot of things about our cooking, about our songs. So why don't you just stop it with the anti-Italian stuff that you're coming up with? It doesn't hold water. We meant the best in the whole wide world for you, and we meant the best in the whole wide world for everybody. Italians brought a lot to this country. We brought families that were respectable.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Michelle Camarena? Michelle?
Mr. Wesley, it's Michele Camereri, also known as Mike Camereri, thank you.
Thank you.
We, let's see, there's so many, we have so many reasons to divide us, so many issues in this country that would divide us. There are political views, political agenda, there's religious belief, which at times generates hate and generates violence, unfortunately. It goes against the core of this country, which is inclusiveness, embracing each other's culture, and just like our mayor expressed during his inauguration speech, that the Angelenos embrace that, the Angelenos want that, and his vision to see the country to embrace that as well. So by acknowledging and supporting Columbus Day, we basically support the core of what this country stands for, which is unifying, understanding the immigrant culture, and embracing, and embracing what we stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have Michael D., Michael D., I can't do the last name. Michael, help me out here. Michael D.? Chiro. Okay. Didgeridoo.
I'm Michael DiGiro, a proud Italian-American. My parents were immigrants from Italy, like Joe Buscainos, and we came here for a better life and become respectable Americans. They taught me a lot to respect everyone. We have a big Italian family that fought in all wars. My mom had a cousin who was a pilot and was killed in World War II, and we never thought about this racial divide. All we thought about just being American and doing what we could do for America. When I went to grammar school, when the first works I opened was about Christopher Columbus, I didn't know anything about him. All I knew, I thought he was Italian, and that made me really proud to be an Italian. And now to... And now to dissolve this holiday or acknowledgement of Christopher Columbus, to me, it's a slap in the face to all Italian-Americans who fought for this country, who came here for a good life. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Paula Cipollina? Paula Cipollina, Paula, please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Paula, Paula Cipollina. I was born in Genoa, so the same place of Christopher Columbus was born. So I represent a new generation because it's only six years I live in America, in Los Angeles, and create a huge group of Italian community. We are almost 15,000 people in Facebook, and I was, accept my, my culture, and I love my culture, I love American culture, and I respect all the culture in the world. And I think we, we can delay a Christopher, a Christopher Columbus Day because it's too important, it's a part of our history. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, if we could, if, Mr. Clerk, if you could restart the clock, I'd like to get Gloria Aronellis, Rudy Ortega Jr., and Sharon Speed, please come forward. Shannon, I'm so sorry.
Yes? Good morning, President Weston, Commissioners, Councilpersons. I stand before you as a Tongva woman. This was my land for 15,000 years prior to any colonization. People came and changed us and tried to erase us. I'm here to tell you that we are not disappearing, we are still here. Thank you very much. I want you to look into any eyes of any children that are here in the audience, and if you are making a decision to vote in favor of removing Columbus Day, making it Indigenous People Day, I applaud you, and our children will hold you as a legacy, as somebody who changed what is happening in education, in the schools. True education is not teaching the truth, and we need to learn that truth. If you are abstaining, please look at the children, please provide that legacy and provide the future for them that they will understand. If you are opposed, look at the children, okay? Remember the children.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Chukma councilmembers, I respectfully acknowledge the Gabrielino Tongva people on whose lands we meet today. My name is Shannon Speed, and I'm a Chickasaw tribal citizen and director of the American Indian Studies Center at UCLA. I come before you as a scholar of human rights and justice processes in order to say that today you hold in your hands the opportunity to carry out an act of restorative justice. Eliminating Columbus Day as a city holiday is an acknowledgement of both the historical falsehoods that have been ideologically propagated against indigenous peoples and the ongoing harm that the celebration of this day represents for our peoples today. In the creation of Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday in this city on the second Monday of October is an act of restorative justice in the sense that it restores a truth directly and facilitates a process of mutual forgiveness. More importantly, given this historic opportunity, failing to do so will create the opposite effect, engendering not truth-telling and mutual healing, but rather feelings of resentment, anger, and betrayal by those who have repeatedly told this body what is needed to right this wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council, council president. My name is Rudy Ortega Jr. I'm Fernando Digna Totavium, I'm the tribal president, I'm also the chair of the Los Angeles County Native American Indian Commission. I'm asking you to vote in favor of Indigenous Day, and the reason is, is there's obvious a lot of people who explained and testified before you, but for me, I'm right here. My great-grandfather lost his lands because of the aqueduct. My great-uncle went to war in World War II, World War I, sorry, my father went to World War II. He served in this country, but my great-uncle served because, one, it was a draft, two, he wasn't a citizen of the United States, yet he was born here in Los Angeles. And that's when we talk about Indigenous Day, we're talking about identifying the people who are from here. I didn't come from somewhere else. My ancestors here, I'm from Situnanga, which is in Sino. This is my ancestors' lands. I have nowhere to go. This is where I'm from, I'm here to look at it. I know it's painful, I know it's hard as Italian people, your contribution needs to be acknowledged as well, and I know it's emotional, but think about it, when these people came, they were emotional as their lives changed. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could have Chrissy Castro, Brian McDonald, and Joseph Quintana?
I'm Chrissy Castro Navajo CD1. I'm here standing with millions of indigenous people that call L.A. home, asking the city council to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. A few city council members want us to choose a different day. I'm here to let you know that the millions of indigenous people that are in Los Angeles cannot and will not accept that. One, we have been celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day since its inception. We have historical records that show at least formally since the 1970s we've been celebrating that day during this time. To make us celebrate on any other day would be a further injustice to a very long line of injustices that have been perpetrated against our people. I don't think the city council wants to do that. Two, we have the highest rate of youth suicides. The American Psychological Association has determined that their dehumanizing symbols such as Columbus are, are part of the cause for that. We must stop that now. Please do what's right, stand on the right side of history, and we, we, we ask you to stand on the side of justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, my name's Brian McDonald, I'm a member of the Chimwavy Indian Tribe and the vice chairman of the Tribal Alliance of Sovereign Indian Nations, also known as Tassen. Tassen is an intergovernmental association of federally recognized tribal governments throughout Southern California dedicated to protecting and promoting the tribal sovereign government rights, cultural identity, and interest of federally recognized tribes. We are the descendants of the original peoples who inhabited and governed these lands long before Christopher Columbus set sail. A true and accurate account of the residence and occupation of the Americas by indigenous peoples since time immemorial is necessary to set the historical record straight and to respect the culture, language, and traditional life ways of our indigenous ancestors. Having the city of Los Angeles recognize and celebrate the heritage of federally recognized, state-recognized indigenous peoples from all over the world is necessary to respect the indigenous history and unite all of these people. Certainly, one minute is not a huge amount of time to go into detail, hopefully you can expend those. Thank you.
Okay, if I could get the next speaker. I'm also looking for Dr. Stephen Hackel, and I think it's Braheed Pulskamp. Yes, sir.
Kuaatzi, good afternoon, council. My name is Joseph Quintana, I'm development director, United American Indian involvement, I'm also an L.A. City County American Indian Commissioner. I'd like to mention that I'm in the business of hope, just like you are, a hope for a better tomorrow, a hope for better for our people. We look at this council, anybody who comes to L.A., they know why this place is great, it's because of you, your representation, African-American, Asian-American, Mexican-American, But also, what about the American Indian? You've been erased, you've been erased from education, you've been erased from the history books. What's the promise for us? Is the promise for a better tomorrow? I'm in the business of creating hope, just as you are. Create that hope. The question today isn't whether or not we have the will to make this change, the question is whether or not you're gonna make it for us. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get Dr. Goman and Dr. Douglas Carranza, yeah, please come forward and identify yourself, sir.
I'm Steve Hackel, a professor of history at UC Riverside. I was invited to be a special expert witness today, but that panel was canceled an hour ago. It's worth remembering that Christopher Columbus's, his conscience was not troubled by the taking and selling of slaves. Today we come here to remember that the long, dark shadow of Christopher Columbus also reached to California. Before 1769, California had a native population of 350,000 people. After 60 or 70 years of colonization, 80,000 Indians had been baptized and 60,000 in the missions had died, 25,000 of those were children under the age of 10. Yet remarkably, in the midst of this catastrophe, indigenous people of California and elsewhere built the city of Los Angeles. They moved here from Mexico, they moved here from impoverished regions of Mexico and works with, worked with the Gabrielino Tongva to build the city of Los Angeles. Thus, since its origins, Los Angeles has been a city of indigenous people. Given the long history of suffering by native peoples in the Americas, today we make a choice to remember Columbus or the indigenous peoples who built Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Yes, please identify yourself.
Yatev, Bridget Pulskamp, Yenashay, Sinajini Nishlin, Bilagana Basish Chin, Twidachini Sheeaya, Shache, Ado, Shinali. I'm standing here before you as a mother, as a grandmother, as a human being, that I'm asking for you for the reconciliation and the justice and the healing for our people. And we talk about Columbus Day coming and being here from 500 years ago and the terrorization that began and the trauma, but what I wanted to bring to you and let you know that this still exists today for our children in our rooms, in our classrooms. My son in kindergarten entered through those doors into the public school system with his, wearing his hair long and strong and proud. On Columbus Day that night, he came home and at our dinner table looked at me and said, "Mom, I'm not Indian." And that broke my heart because I knew whatever was said, whatever was done, broke his heart that day.
Thank you.
And I'm just pleading that this needs to be changed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hello, my name is Monique Castro, I'm Dene, I'm Mexican. I was born and raised here in northeast Los Angeles in the community of Lincoln Heights. Los Angeles has been home to my family since 1961. Like many of us, I wear various hats. This includes supporting my community in diverse roles and capacities. One of my roles is a mental health therapist. As a therapist, I witness firsthand how false messages, imagery, and information negatively impacts our, our community. It is absolutely necessary that I advocate on behalf of my community where there is an alarming rate of suicide, substance use, intimate partner violence, health disparities, and repeated trauma. I have the responsibility to ensure the emotional, psychological, and physical well-being of my clients and my community. Understand that I have a lived experience of everything I've just shared with you. As a student, I learned and did the research. As a therapist, I work tirelessly to create space to heal many generations of trauma.
Thank you, thank you. If I could get the next speaker? Yes, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Mashana Goman, I'm chair of the American Indian Studies at UCLA. I come here today with a good mind, that is, I come with peace, awareness, and intent here. I wanted to say that we are, we are not about anti-immigrant or anti-Italian, but not about celebrating a man who caused great harm. In our communities, we banished rapists. So, just as it has taken work to obscure indigenous people, it will take all of us to move forward from past harms. It is not about celebrating one version of history over all others, but addressing how we may come together as communities and recognize our relationship to this place as we build a future. We're all guests on Tongva land. Invisibility has harmed indigenous communities in material ways. We are the highest population who experience sexual violence, one in three, incarceration, and extreme forms of violence outside, outside our own racial groups. All too often, these statistics are left out of reporting, however, even though on the social economic indicators, American Indian, Alaskan natives often are at the lower rung.
Thank you.
Stereotypes hurt all our children.
Thank you, thank you.
I recognize you take leadership.
Now, let me, let me just, sir, and, and if you could identify yourself, what I'm saying, if I didn't call your name, don't get in line unless I call your name. I gotta keep some order, and, so that I, I try to be fair, and, and I'm assuming you're, are you Douglas? Okay. And then after you, I want Marcos Aguilar and Lydia Ponse.
Good morning, my name is Douglas Carranza, I am a professor and chair of the Department of Central American Studies at CSUN and also a member of the American Indian Program at CSUN. I am here to support the replacement of the name of Columbus Day for Indigenous Day, even though it doesn't make any justice. Speaking just one minute, because you cannot explain in one minute everything. I am from El Salvador, and during, I migrated to this country 36 years ago. Hundreds of American Indians move also from Central America, more than 200,000 people were killed in Guatemala, most of them Mayakichare. You have here in Los Angeles hundreds of thousands of Central American indigenous people. Then I think it will be justified.
Thank you.
But one minute is not enough. Thank you, I support this move.
Mr. Aguilera. Mr. President Weston, Councilmember Gil Cedillo, Councilmember Jose Wizar, we've known each other for a long time now. I'm here on behalf of indigenous youth and families in the community served by Anahuac Almeque, International University Preparatory of North America. I urge you to abolish Columbus Day and adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. In Los Angeles, this campaign has been spearheaded by the city and county of Los Angeles's official mechanism by addressing the interests of indigenous peoples, the Native American Indian Commission, and hundreds of other groups and people. Any proposal which contradicts this official mechanism's call to action challenges a well-thought-out, embedded public process which has garnered the support of community-based indigenous peoples and our leaders, therefore contradicting free, prior, and informed consent, which means that this council, if it does not implement Indigenous Peoples' Day as recommended by the commission, would be denying free, prior, and informed consent of indigenous peoples in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here, my day job is to take care of children, to raise them with good values, and to think about their future. I urge you to do that as well.
Thank you.
Lydia Ponse. Visitors fences pushing west conquistadors, their manifest destiny. We are people of the sun, we are good stock, made slaves, blood, sweat, tears, masoned missions. Those colonial settlers began to kill earth-mother, taking, taking, land, water, fire, air, first kill the Indian, residential boarding schools, alcohol, and commodities. Our tobacco sage prayers since time immemorial always united eagle and condor because dividing, conquer battles never ended. It's war every day, wounded knee to standing rock, from Toypurianna to Ain to Zapatistas. Our songs and our prayers versus technologic, science experiments on black and red indentured servants. Reservations, reserves, ghettos of the world, eugenics, rapes, murders, thieves, broken treaties, broken promises, broken hearts, suicides because of lies, because of lies. Your pipelines, your deforestation, mining, dynamite, blasting for oil, uranium, copper, gold, your man camps are murdered and missing indigenous women on Turtle Island. Indigenous are still here.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Ponse, thank you. Okay. 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 15 minutes on each side has been satisfied for now. So what we're gonna begin, no, sir, I, I, I hear you, but please, so what we're gonna do now is we will begin the conversation with the council. Before we start, I'm gonna ask Brian, if you would, Blaine, I'm sorry, I changed your name, Brian ain't a bad name, but Blaine, as soon as I said that, I knew it was wrong. But I'm gonna ask you to kinda walk through the recommendation from the Rules Committee. But members, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that this process in November would have been a two-year process. It started with the Arts Parks Committee, and it was, I guess, quarterbacked at that time by the Human Relations Committee. Last year, the beginning of this year, the Rules Committee had a few hearings, and so I believe effective November, this would be a two-year process. So why don't you walk through So why don't you walk through the recommendation from the Rules Committee?
Thank you. Blaine Suttonwills, Office of Chief Legislative Analyst. Before you today on the agenda is a recommendation from the Rules Elections Intergovernment Relations and Neighborhood Committee Report. Item, recommendation number one is designate October 12th of each year as Italian-American Heritage Day in the city of Los Angeles to recognize the contributions of Italian-Americans to the history and culture of Los Angeles. Number two, approve the creation of an Indigenous Peoples' Day as an official city holiday to be observed on the second Monday of each October and to be recognized no later than 2019, in the 2019 calendar year. Number three, request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance amending the Los Angeles Ad Code to remove all references to Columbus Day as an official holiday and recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in the administrative code. Number four, instruct all general managers and department heads upon amendment of the LA Ad Code to include recognition and observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day on all relevant city documents, including but not limited to calendars, schedules, and administrative materials. Number five, instruct the city clerk to prepare and send a letter to the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education subsequent to the official council action indicating that the city will now recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of each October and urge the LAUSD Board to consider taking similar action. Number six, instruct the city administrative officer to provide a report on the process of implementing an additional city holiday, which recognizes the contribution of all the diverse cultures in the city of Los Angeles, including potential names which accurately describe the intent of the council, potential fiscal impacts, and the identification of any issues which may be subject to meet and confer with city unions.
Thank you, Blaine. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, I'm gonna call on you to begin the conversation.
Thank you so much, President.
One second, Mr. O'Farrell. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
And, Mr. President, amending motions 13C and 13D have been posted, circulated, and submitted, and are now before council for consideration as well.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I really appreciate this moment, and I really appreciate the involvement of the Human Relations Commission, City Attorney's Office, CIO's office, and CLA's office, and the participation of hundreds and hundreds of Angelinos across the city over the last 22 months on an initial motion that I introduced in November of 2015, calling for a process in which we could recognize the contributions of indigenous peoples. Now, that process led to the report that Mr. Suttonwills just read, outlining the six pieces of instruction from that unanimous committee decision back in June. And that was after the process that I mentioned took place. Los Angeles has the largest Native American population of any city in the United States. Los Angeles has the largest population of any indigenous peoples from other places of any city in the United States. The historical record is unambiguous in terms of the atrocities that Christopher Columbus himself and his men enacted on the Taino Native peoples on the island that they called Hispaniola in 1492, and the three subsequent trips back to the West Indies, Central America, South America, setting in process a centuries-long genocide unmatched in breadth and scope anywhere in world history. Now, some hundreds years later, the Spanish began exploring the coast of California. The mission system was established in 1769, beginning with San Diego. Within 50 years, 21 missions were established up and down the state, including the mission of San Gabriel. Now, the Tongva and other local tribes, including the Chumash, suffered incredible losses here in Los Angeles. City Hall is built on a village that was once called Yangnai, Yangna, which was a Tongva village. In 1828, a German immigrant sold the land out from under the Tongva and evicted the Tongva inhabitants of this village that had been their home for thousands of years. The mission system was especially harsh in California, to erase the cultures and cause incredible destruction and harm for native peoples up and down the state, so much so that the Tongva and other tribes still have yet to meet their criteria to become a federally recognized tribe. We're talking about the sweep of thousands of years in Los Angeles, not the sweep of 50 years or a dozen years for recent immigrants to the, to the city. We're talking about something much more profound. This process, I think, daylighted a historical wrong that we have an opportunity, a once-in-a-life opportunity, to right. Los Angeles does bold progressive things. We take bold progressive action. This is an opportunity for us to not become an asterisk in the historical record, but to take the step that other major cities and states have taken. And I look forward to hearing what the panelists have to say about the process that was engaged in, and I would expect that any other action that we take that was instructed by the Rules Committee back in June follow a similar process. This is no time to discard a process. That serves no one. So I look forward to hearing this report and then moving forward on replacing indigenous, replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October.
Please, please, please. Please, let us have our conversation. Mr. Buzkayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, many of us here today come with a lot of pride, passion, and emotion, and these feelings come from the human desire to be recognized and to be valued. Indigenous people deserve to be recognized and valued. This is why I support an Indigenous Peoples' Day in this great city. I also support the elimination of Columbus Day as an official city holiday, despite the disappointment it brings to my brothers and sisters in the Italian-American community. Now, I do so because I believe that the celebration of culture is important. We must learn our history, otherwise we are doomed to repeat it. The contributions and sacrifices of natives people in this country must be acknowledged and discussed. My daughter today is learning about Native American culture in her fifth grade class. Just the other day, I walked into my garage, and my son, 14 years old, has been making his own dreamcatchers. And what I don't support, however, is replacing the underlying meaning behind a holiday that's important, social and cultural importance to the Italian-Americans. America has a proud tradition as an immigrant nation, but it also has a long history of marginalizing those it marks as quote-unquote "other." America's other heritage includes suspicion, hostility, abuse, and even death leveled against ethnic groups as they arrived one after another in the waves over the past two and a half centuries. We've forgotten the depth of prejudice and outright hatred faced by Italian-Americans in this country. The type of prejudice and hatred experienced by Italians over 100 years ago has been replayed, replayed over and over for all immigrants and members of minority faiths everywhere in every historical period, including our own. This is why I find it ultimately important not to cure one offense with another. We must embrace Los Angeles, not divide it. How can we, on one hand, support the dignity and human rights of people while, on the other hand, replace one group's social inclusiveness for the sake of another? How is that fair and just? My culture, under the direction of my mom and dad, my dad's here right now, taught me the importance of faith, of family, of love, and respect for everyone. And this is what we need to celebrate in our cultures today. I know from you, my colleagues here in this room, that many other cultures, including yours, share these same values. We all love our families. We practice our faith, whatever it may be, and we make every attempt to act morally. We come from varying backgrounds and are very diverse, and here in Los Angeles, we've learned to coexist. Los Angeles is the epicenter of cultural diversity. We have illustrated to the world that we can thrive in diversity. Just look at this council, Catholics, Jews, LGBT, Armenian, Korean, African-American, Latinos, Latinas, and yes, an Italian. Yet, yet, yet we do not officially celebrate this diversity and give pause to its relevance. The United Nations, and I say the city of Los Angeles is a modeled United Nations. The United Nations was found to promote and encourage respect for human rights and for fundamental freedoms of, for all without distinction of race, of sex, language, or religion. Member states, including the United States is one, have pledged to protect and uphold these rights. In 1995, the United Nations declared World Indigenous Peoples' Day to be observed on August 9th and call on all governments to observe that date as well. Now, if we decide to eliminate any references to Columbus Day on city books, we would be remiss not to take this opportunity to, to make history by reflecting on our own history here in Los Angeles, creating a day that commemorates and celebrates the contributions of the original settlers of El Pueblo. The Pobladores, they were 44 original settlers and four soldiers who founded the city of Los Angeles, California, in 1781. And back then, finding the individuals to actually do the work of building and living in a city was a daunting task for the governor at the time, but he amassed a diverse group of people willing to do the work. The cultural mix of people that formed this group of families speaks to our diverse history. They were Spanish, Black, American Indian, Mazzisto, and Molato families, all working together to create a new city. I wonder what they would think of this city two and a half centuries later. Now, let's seize on this opportunity, colleagues. Harness the diversity and beauty of this great city to speak to everyone here, everyone in this great city, that every single one of us is important. All of our individual cultures matter, and our shared history matters. Because this is Los Angeles, a unique embodiment of individual expression coupled with the shared people of, of living in such an amazing and diverse place where all of our dreams can come true. So today, let's live up to that dream. Take a leap of faith and celebrate LA by declaring our own day. To celebrate Los Angeles, unite Los Angeles, embrace LA, I ask for your vote to support vision, not division. Support unity and not retribution or vengeance. Support our history and diversity and not replace one group with another. Our role here as leaders and decision-makers is to make tough calls that, that don't always make everyone happy, but we believe will propel our city forward by reflecting the vision of a world-class city. And I believe my proposal, the amendment before he does that today. Let's declare Indigenous Peoples' Day on the date that has been recognized by the United Nations, because we are a city of United Nations, and that's commemorated by our own school district. And let's capture this opportunity to write our own history right here, right now. Let's unite, let's reflect, and let's make history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buzkayeno. Mr., Mr. Sedia.
Mr. President, I'm gonna be characteristically brief today. Now, that brings joy to many in the audience and to my dear colleagues. I didn't realize that I was being a little extensive. Let me applaud all those who are here today. All, from all the communities. It is a incredible experience that we're going through here, this democratic process where people come to lobby their elected leadership and to seek justice through a process of which we are all a part of. Even our votes today are part of this process. Let me applaud my colleagues who have brought these motions forward. They are timely, and they are due. I like to say that justice, as long as it takes, is always on time. I know people have been involved in the process for two years, and I know that that seems like a very long time, and I understand and appreciate and respect that. And I also have a history being involved in various struggles that take their time, and they take as long as they take. And so we are here today after centuries, seeking justice. And so I stand today in full support of the resolution to eliminate Columbus Day. Mr. President, I have signed your motion. I am proud to second it, and it accomplishes that. But I also stand today for unity. This is not an either-or proposition. We have goals.
No, no, no.
And objectives, and we can accomplish them. We have choices to make. They're all good choices. We will leave here today, and there will be an Indigenous Peoples' Day, and there will be an elimination of Columbus Day. There is no question about that. The question is, what path do we choose to get there? Do we choose a path of reconciliation and justice and unity? That is what I propose today. Let me suggest to you that at this time in our nation, there is nothing more important than these conversations, these efforts to reconcile our history and our path forward. This nation and this city needs unity, and it needs it now. We have had too many Charlottesville, Virginias, too many Phoenix, Arizonas, yes, even too many Berkeley, Californias, where divisiveness and hate and racism are too abundant throughout this nation. And so today.
No, no.
And so today, we are here to make a choice. The heckling and the divisiveness that we hear, the lack of respect that was just uttered, or a more disciplined, a more determined, a more challenged and nuanced way forward. That is what I'm calling for. I call for us to choose the more difficult, more challenged, the more hopeful way forward. Because when we choose reconciliation, we are choosing hope. When we look for compromise as the path forward, we are placing faith in our opponents and those who disagree with us. You can disagree with me this afternoon, that's fine. I will still love you. I always have, and I always will. I am not unfamiliar with disagreement. I am not unfamiliar with disagreement. I know it well, and all the things that I have done, good and bad. But today, we have, as I said, a simple choice, but yet a pronounced one. Unity is what our nation needs today. Justice is what our nation needs today. And so I call for us to join the estimated 370 million indigenous people in the world living across 90 countries, make up 5% of the world's population, but account for 50% of the poorest. They speak an overwhelming majority of the world's estimated 7,000 languages, and they represent 5,000 different cultures. I have roots in the indigenous community. I am proud of my Mexican heritage, and I am proud of my Talmud heritage. Indigenous people are the inheritors and practitioners of unique cultures and ways of relating to people and the environment. They have retained social, cultural, economic, and political characteristics that are distinct from those of the dominant societies in which they live. And despite their cultural differences, indigenous peoples from around the world share common problems related to the protection of their rights as distinct people. I have advocated for indigenous peoples' rights to sovereignty. I have a record in the legislature. There was a division amongst indigenous people. There were those who wanted gaming, and then a nuanced difference, those who wanted gaming with respect for trade unionists, Mr. President. You recall that during our time in Sacramento. Indigenous people have a right to determine their own destinies. And I call upon us to join the millions of indigenous people who have come to the Community of Nations and asked for a declaration that is now recognized and practiced. You can wave your finger all you want, but this is the truth, and are now recognized and practiced throughout the world. I ask us to join that community and bring unity, acknowledge August 9th as the Indigenous Peoples' Day throughout the world. Do so, do so, do so in a way...
Mr. Sadiya, come on. No, I mean, you spoke more than Joe. Push your button again. I mean, you got up and told us you were going to speak...
Let me finish, sir.
All right, we're wrapping, I mean, really.
Let me finish. Please, sir.
And I love you, but you did...
And I love you, sir, but please don't interrupt me. Let me finish here. Look, here is our choice. August 9th provides us an opportunity to join the world community. It's recognized by the U.N., but more so will be recognized and appreciated by the Angelinos of Los Angeles, all of us. All of us. And that provides us an opportunity to build unity at a time we need it. And then for us, Mr. President, as you consistently and always say, and as all of us were so thoughtful about acknowledging yesterday, acknowledging the diversity and the strength in diversity in this city so that we can move forward with reconciliation, justice, and peace. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Shh. No, 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 shh. No, 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 no. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank everybody who's here today. Mr. President, in this morning's paper, you described this issue as one that for the members of this council would be a heart check and a gut check. And I think for most of us, it has been. For me, it has been. Last night, I spent some time, and I took out a paper my uncle wrote when he was in college, a family history. And it was in part the story of my great-grandparents, Paolo and Elisabetta Constantino, who came here over 100 years ago from Popoli, Italy. My great-grandfather, Paolo, came here in 1895. They married in 1895, he came here in 1900. He got a job here, working, building a dam, the Wachusett Dam in my hometown. He sent for his wife and his two children a few years later. Three days before they were to leave, the two children died in a fire. My great-grandmother arrived, they had two more children. They died of scarlet fever and pneumonia in the work camp in my hometown. They went on, and they had four more children, two of whom served in World War II, serving this country, even against the country that their parents were born in. And one of whom, my grandfather, went on to work his way through Harvard and Harvard Law School as a barber before becoming an elected official and a municipal court judge in my hometown. During the Depression, they took in up to eight borders at a time to support themselves. I got a letter today urging us not to do what Mr. O'Farrell is urging, because I ask that you do not take away the American dream of our ancestors and their history. I've thought about my ancestors and their history. And to me, celebrating Columbus Day does not honor their story and their struggle and their history. It insults it, and it besmirches it. They came here to build something and not to destroy something. They came here to earn something and not to steal something. They came here to make life better for their children and not take away something from somebody else's children. And they did that. And I think the best way, as an Italian-American, that I can honor their sacrifice and their heritage, is to try to make the world better for my children and for our children. And part of that is trying to make a better world, and part of that is modeling for my son and teaching my son when to apologize, when to admit he's wrong, and when to try to make amends. And this gesture of replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day is a very small step in apologizing and in making amends. I know it's hard for some to wrap their heads around why it's so important, symbolically, to replace Columbus Day. As a gay man, I was elated when the Supreme Court, in June of 2015, legalized same-sex marriage across the country. And there was a particularly strong resonance that they did it at the end of June, because it was the end of June when there were the Stonewall riots and the gay liberation movement began, and that symbolism was important. The end of June was important because that's also the same month and same time of year when the Supreme Court, a generation earlier, had outlawed sodomy and upheld discrimination against my community. That symbolism is important. And the symbolism of Indigenous Peoples' Day replacing Columbus Day is an apt symbol for a culture of genocide that came and replaced an entire people. It's been said by a few today that the act of replacing is somehow divisive. And I thought on that. I thought on that long and hard, and I thought on our history. And I was reminded that the people who marched on Selma were described as divisive. The people who organized the great boycotts were described as divisive. The attempts to allow LGBT men and women to serve in the military was described as divisive and disruptive. The young teenager who speaks up against the anti-Semitic uncle at the Thanksgiving table is often described as the one who's being divisive. And often, the pursuit of justice feels uncomfortable or feels divisive to those who are not suffering from the lash of the injustice. It was said by one of the speakers today that it's unfair to remove Columbus Day. I want to think on that for a second. Let that word hang in the air for just a moment. How does describing taking away a holiday as unfair, how must that sound to the few surviving descendants of a people who were raped and massacred and almost eliminated from the face of this continent? How must that sound to the victims of one of the greatest injustices and unfairnesses that this country has ever seen? It's important that we acknowledge the context in which this decision is being made. It's a hard one. It genuinely pains me to disagree with Joe, who I love, who I feel genuine kinship with, one of my favorite people in the world. But in the context of what has happened in this country, in the context of where we are as a people, I think it is important to do what Mr. O'Farrell asks. So as the great-grandson of Italian immigrants, who's very proud of their sacrifice and their story, and as someone who grew up on land that used to belong to the Nipmuck Indians in Massachusetts, and who represents land that used to belong to the Gabriellino-Tungvas here in Los Angeles, and as someone who wants a better world for his son and that generation, I'm supporting Mr. O'Farrell's motion today.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for your eloquent words and your support. Colleagues, what we have before us are two amending motions, 13D and 13C, and you'll hear more about those. But 13C, for those in the gallery, colleagues, 13C would do the following. It would approve the creation of Indigenous Peoples' Day as an official city holiday to be observed on August 9th. Colleagues, I urge you to oppose 13C. It is arbitrary. It relegates an entire movement, an entire process, and completely throws it under the bus. Now, I would argue very strongly that the courageous vote to take is to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Other cities that have not done so are in the stark minority, and they are a footnote. Is Los Angeles a footnote? Are we acting because, to follow the United Nations? Are we Los Angeles, or are we the United Nations? We are Los Angeles. We take bold steps. I would argue very strongly that this is not anti-Italian. It never has been. It has never been anti-Italian.
No, 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 just don't, Mr... Let's get to the vote. Let's keep it down. Let's keep it down. Let's keep it down.
Mr. President, colleagues, we are not creating a racial conflict. We are ending one. We are ending a racial conflict.
No, please, you know, this last warning, I don't know who that is, but don't do it anymore, please.
That's okay. As a gay Native American, I've been called a lot worse. All right, so, this has nothing to do with division. It has everything to do with healing and doing what is morally, historically, and spiritually just. The refusal by some to agree with replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day just speaks to the level of erasure throughout history that must be overcome. Why would this council shrink back from making this bold statement, from doing what is right? Why would we choose an arbitrary day that popped up in the last week and a half to violate an entire process that took place over a 22-month period? In June, the Rules Committee, supported by a broad coalition of organizations, voted unanimously to agree to the repeal and replacement of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day and designate October 12th as Italian-American Heritage Day. This is real compromise, fully supported by a large swath of organizations, too many to name here, but here are a few. The L.A. City County Native American Commission. CHIRLA is the Coalition of Humane Immigrant Rights. The Armenia National Committee of the Western Region. Semillas Sociedad Civil. SALAF, the Unified Young Armenians, and the support letters are rolling in. Colleagues, I urge you to vote in opposition to 13C, in support of 13D, and to adopt the remaining report from the Rules Committee from June of this year. Thank you.
Mr. Sadiya.
Mr. President, I assure you I will be brief. Only with regard to this point that was made about August 9th. August 9th is not arbitrary. It's a date chosen by indigenous people throughout the world. August 9th is not something that came up within the last week. It's been presented and debated in the United Nations. It was a movement that emerged from the '70s and the '80s. It was declared in 1994. It is in its 10th anniversary. August 9th is the history of the struggle of indigenous people and their hopes and their aspirations for recognition and for reconciliation, for peace and for justice and for their rights to be acknowledged as sovereign nations in the world and community of nations. It is not arbitrary.
Okay, now, as... No, 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 no. Come on now, we are, it's almost done. Now, Mr. Clerk, walk us through the order. Now, it's my understanding that the first vote will be on my amendment, correct?
Yes, sir, 13D.
Okay, so, members, 13D is before us. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
15 ayes.
Now, Mr. Clerk, what is the item that is before us at this point?
Mr. President, now would be 13C, which would amend the Rules, Elections, Intergovernmental Relations, and Neighborhoods Committee report as just amended by 13D. So you have the Rules Committee report as amended by 13D, and now you have item 13C before you.
Okay, so, Mr. Buzkayeno is requesting an aye vote. Mr. O'Farrell is requesting a no vote. Please, open the roll. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, 11 noes.
That fails of adoption. Mr. President, now before counsel is the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee report as amended by 13D.
Okay, so with that said, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
14 ayes, 1 no.
Mr. O'Farrell, do you want to...
Fourth with.
Fourth with on this item. So basically, what happened, the report from the Rules Committee was approved as amended. Okay, we still have work before this body, so I would ask you to be quiet and let us wrap up our day. Thank you from both sides for coming in today. Is, Mr. Clerk, is it general public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's, can I get the names? Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, please, would you help me clear that center aisle? Please help me clear that center aisle.
Thank you.
I want to recognize Mr. Herman and Mr. Spindler. Please come to the podium. Sergeants, make enough space. Mr. Herman... Mr. Herman, if you're going to speak, you need to come now. Mr. Herman, if you want to speak or not... Okay, please, if we could have quiet? Okay, Mr. Herman, go ahead.
Why the fuck do we need Indigenous Day? Because we say so. Fuck all the white niggers who suppress our free speech, First Amendment, 14th Amendment. We got to learn to love. Learn how to love, and fuck all you white niggers and all the fucking noise behind me. Fuck all of you, First Amendment, 14th Amendment. And when Jose Weisart and Plum threw out the attorney, fuck that white nigger too. And regarding this Sicily bitch and that fucking bitch who allows that pedophile of LASD to serve 105 years, that's what the fuck you get. Go to hell, all of you. Fuck America. Fuck your embedded man. This is the new embedded man of America. We want more love. Love, 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 love. Fuck you, Herman.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, come forward. Go ahead.
So, I was going to drop the lawsuit, but your friend Danny Bakewell brought me a challenge. I was feeling sorry for myself. I was going to sell the house and move, put it by me. I'd been with a therapist. But Monday night, my life changed with Pat Harvey, calling me a fucking terrorist. KCal? Your attorney used to be their general counsel fraud. So, no, therapy, talking is wrong. This is fucking war. That's what this is. You brought it to me. I stayed away. You want me here, you fuck-up, so here I am. Get ready, bitch. We're going to fucking trial, bitch, okay? Fuck you, hub.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, I'm shaking in my boots. All right, now, do I have Madeleine Merritt? Who else is here on general public comment? Oh, Leah, right? Come on. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Leah Rene Memzek, and I'm going to read to you why today was so historic. Today, the steam shovel bites into a hill rising over Bel Air Bay and closes its jaws on a heap of Indian bones. Councilmember Bonin, on a heap of Indian bones. The steam shovel bites into a hill rising over Bel Air Bay today. This is your document. It's inside your planning commission right now upstairs. The Indian bones, and you don't even watch. You just did that for effect. You don't... You are exempting the Indian bones from CEQA right now, and I asked for an extension, and you didn't respond. Yesterday, you didn't respond. No one responded.
Mr. Spindler, sit down. Somebody else is speaking. You can't be in the center aisle. Sit down.
So, I don't think you care.
Thank you, Leah. Is anyone that's filled out a public comment card that hasn't spoken? Is there anyone here? Sir, did you fill out a card? Come forward, ma'am. Identify yourself. Come forward, sir. Just tell me your name. Sir, you. You. Your name?
My name is Bruce Durbin. I'm a resident of North Hollywood, and I just would like to thank the council for this consideration. I am a longtime resident of this city, 20-plus years. The city has given me a fantastic education and a wonderful opportunity. I am also an enrolled member of the Epi Nation of Santa Isabel, which is about 150 miles from the city of Los Angeles. And I'd just like to say that, as diverse and as inclusive as the city of Los Angeles it is, being Native American is one of the most culturally isolating experiences you can have in this city. We have no monuments. We have no historic district. We have no ethnic district. But now, we have Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I'd like to thank you. I know this wasn't easy, and I really appreciate our leaders for actually being leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself.
My name's Anna Christensen. I'm from Long Beach, California, and I came up here today regarding the issue you just voted on. I, too, as the mother of two children who have indigenous heritage, want to thank you very much. Many years ago, the city of Long Beach turned away, in 1992, we turned away the replicas of Columbus's ships, and our city council voted to do that. We were the only city in the United States that did that. Next week, we reversed ourselves, of course, once the Spanish council showed up. But it's important to make bold statements and stand for justice, and you did that. And you weren't distracted by the idea of diversity. Would we change Black History Month to Diversity Month? I think not. So, I want to thank you for what you did here today, and I want to encourage you to examine not just Confederate monuments, but maybe other monuments. Monuments like maybe something or a school named after John C. Fremont. That was my elementary school. Maybe other things. Other things, but also...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. Do we have another?
Emiliano Martinez, a voting resident of council, member Mitchell Farrell's district. Thank you so much, Mitch, and those of you that voted in favor of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second week of October. On behalf of American Indian Movement, SOCal, which I'm also a proud member of, we give our thanks to this council here today. And just for the record, us natives, we do not discriminate or hate against our fellow residents here that happen to be of Italian-American descent. I happen to love Italian food, as you may see for the record, but I have to say, where did pasta come from? Where did tomatoes come from? You know, gentlemen referred to us as being hateful earlier, and I have to address that for the record and to honor my grandfather, who went to Europe to fight in World War II, to fight fascism, to fight Nazis. We continue to fight. I do it every day as best I can, and that we need to divest from Wells Fargo's too. Thank you.
Jeff, General Jeff? Yes, sir.
Good morning, uh, geez, good morning, City Council. My name is General Jeff. I'm Skid Row, and this is a proud day for the city of Los Angeles. As a proud, homegrown Angelino, I'm very, very excited. This is not about disrespecting Italian-Americans, and I think that this council should definitely move forward with replacing Christopher Columbus Day, that concept of one man, and rectifying and notifying, recognizing an entire people, Italian-Americans. But this is definitely a big day. I'm glad that the city of Los Angeles took the initiative to recognize its own history. The city of Los Angeles always respects and honors others for their contributions, but to recognize the indigenous folks that created this city, and we're talking about those with African descent, Latin descent, and Native descent. And so, this is a huge day. Thank you so much, and let's move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here that filled out a card for public comment? I don't see any. Okay, that concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before this body?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted. They're referred. Announcements, members? No announcements. If I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise. I'm looking to my left side, which is Mr. Weisart's side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my left. I'm now looking to my right. I don't see any to my right. Members, this meeting is adjourned.